We have some acknowledgements. Two AAA award winners, Ian Fay and Kelsey Eismann. School counselor appreciation week, February 6th through the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Minnesota school board recognition month. I see we have some certificates on our hands. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Corf?
Congratulations to Ian and Kelsey, representing seniors and AAA award winners local. And thank you to Mrs. Laje for all her work and efforts, time spent with our students. And want to thank our, our school board for all your work that you appreciate it.
Let's move on. We have administrative reports, mental health, school cul- school culture. We have Mr. Brugman and Mrs. Laje. How would you like to present?
You go ahead.
Go first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a reminder, if you're not right up here, to speak a little bit louder so that Stacy can hear you.
I do have my hand up if you want on my slide presentation here. But, so if you want to map this, that's fine. I'm just was invited to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing to build what I just kind of labeled Viking culture. And this picture, I just think sums up a lot of what we are trying to do here in that is build memories with our students. Here is Vic DeVike and our Harry, who I'll introduce you to. Homecoming week, after the parade went through the elementary area there, getting the kids to do a school chant. I just love that Viking spirit. So, we'll click the next slide. I want to thank Mr. Nelson, Ms. Janaszewski, Mr. Corf for allowing me to build a culture in, in the school and in the district. Probably I should thank Trevor Steves more because I create kind of messes every once in a while with my, with my activities that I go through. But this just slide right here just kind of quickly rolls through and I'll mention all this stuff. The philosophy of seen, known, loved, Harry in the behave, of course, the Viking spirit, to build culture that Mrs. Janaszewski brings in, the leader in me with the seven habits, easy learning, something that we just implemented. All will be kind of presented here as I roll through. All kind of are packaged in. Culture is a tough thing to describe. You know when it's a good culture, you know when it's a bad culture, but kind of saying what, you know, the ins and outs of it is a little difficult. But I'm going to give you a little taste of the things that we are doing in the school district, the schools, to build that great culture. Next slide. So the biggest thing over the last couple of years is our big hairy audacious vision. And I got this, and I said this in a news article, I think Lou produced, is I got this when my son and I were talking, and we're talking about dreams and goals and stuff like that, and he got it from something that he read. You know, yeah, every once in a while, you gotta have this outrageous, let's go for it kind of vision. And so, when it came to big hairy audacious vision, I was like, I love the sound of that, okay? To go after something that is gonna be tough to reach. I think everyone of us personally and as a school system, as an institution, should have those types of visions. And so when it came down to it, I was like, well, I love mascot. What can we use as a mascot? And I came up with Harry. And Harry then has now become our mascot. And one of the things that, probably my favorite thing that happened so far this year is the guy I'm creating messes for and he has to clean up after me, kind of I was like, okay, hey, we borrowed Harry from Virgus last year and it's big and it's heavy and it's made of steel. And I was like, Trevor, so let's, uh, let's go get Harry. And he's like, we're not gonna go get Harry. We're gonna make Harry. And he spearheaded hiring Lenny Thompson to build our, what is he, seven?
Yeah, over seven.
Seven feet, at least, okay? Just a big guy, he's up in the cafeteria right now, as our own personal mascot. Now, next slide. Our big hairy audacious vision is that Pelican Rapids schools are the best school in the nation in which to work, to learn, and to grow. That's, that's a big vision, alright? That's an audacious vision, but I think it's a worthwhile vision. And so, that's what we're shooting for. That is the vision. Next slide. So, how would this feel? I told the kids and we did this presentation with them at the beginning. The biggest thing, and this is where that seen, known, loved comes in, is that, hey, every one of us, teachers, custodians, students, every one of us is seen, that we're recognized in the school, that we're known, that, that I really try hard to know a little bit about each and every person and let them know that I know about it. And then, not only that, the love part of it, if you don't want to get into the mushy love stuff, caring, just caring about one another and helping each other because life is tough and we need to be there for each other. So that seen, known, loved is how I want everyone in our school district to feel. Next slide. So, what will you remember? I told students what the thing that we want to remember is that we're challenged constantly to create a better us, that all the time. As a 57-year-old, as a 35-year-old, as a 17-year-old, as a 13-year-old, we are constantly trying to create a better you, that we feel supported in what we do. And again, this is teachers, students, faculty, staff, everybody. We have meaningful and rewarding relationships, because that's what life is all about. Next slide. And ultimately, what we want is that every one of us become the person that we were meant to be, the best version, that we're going to create students that are going to be impactful, service-driven, and a positive force in our world. So that's what a best school in the nation kind of looks like for me. Next slide. So, Harry then is kind of like our cheerleader to get us to where we want to be, and Harry then stands for, it's, it's an acronym that stands for different things. We have H for heart, that we have this caring, accepting, okay, type of kindness and empathy for one another, that we take care of each other. The A is for attitude. I love Charles Swindell. Charles Swindell talks about how attitude is more important than, he lists a ton of things, but one of the things that I thought was really unique is he goes, attitude, as far as your success and your future, is more important than education. And I was like, dang, that's a bold statement. We're here for education, but we're also here to help kids learn the skills that will make them more impactful in life. So attitude, such a big part. Respect, huge. Respect, for me, is a choice. We have a choice to respect people, respect things. And I think the more respect we give, the closer we are to being a better person. Then resiliency, because it's not easy. This big hairy audacious vision is tough. We're going to fall back, we're gonna make mistakes. That's part of life. We're gonna have bad days. That's part of life. How resilient are we? We're gonna keep on moving on. And then the Y. Probably a statement that goes best for me when it comes to the Y is, we lose our way when we lose our Y. Alright? So our Y at the end is, hey, we want, we want the best for ourselves, we want the best for the people around us. We want the best school, we want the best atmosphere, we want the best so that we can grow and have rewarding and happy lives. So that's the Harry initiative, and it's kind of like all-encompassing, and we tie that into, we'll have the next slide, the seven habits in Leader in Me, a program that introduced like 10 years ago now? 10 years ago? Seven habits are amazing. I, I personally use this all the time in my life. I personally use it to counsel my friends, my wife when she lets me, okay? Those types of things. But seven habits help create such a strong foundation. The first three habits alone, I, I, myself, I personally believe if we could get our students to understand the value of the first three habits by the time they graduate, we are giving them something just as important as a diploma, alright? Because those first three fundamental, being proactive, beginning with the end of mind, putting first things first, are the foundation that they're going to be able to build that successful person in the future. So what we do with Harry is we combine him and kind of do monthly Harry habits. Next slide. And so, as you can see, we created each month different themes that would tie into Harry, okay, and tie into the seven habits. And so this month, it's begin with a win. And we row together, we rise together, searching for ways to become better by work. Whoops, that's January, I'm sorry. That was our win-win philosophy. Our February, whoo, I'm already there, sound the yellow horn, okay, tied it into our Viking spirit. I'm looking to really hear and understand people around me, okay? This is habit number five, alright? Seek first to understand and then be understood. So we try to tie that into the seven habits. We tried to create activities and just announcements and things that students can think about, okay, constantly so that they connect these habits and connect with Harry. So, next slide. So, school in action, what does that mean? We try to blast it out there. Every Monday, I start the high school with a video, okay, video announcements, and I try to tie in some type of seven habits. I try to tie in some type of motivation, I try to tie into some kind of just encouragement on how to live and be a better person. So we have that. We have all sorts of signs, okay? So, this was the win-win from last month, and then we have permanently, our differences drive our greatness. We have in our cafeteria, all sorts of activities and signs that we hang up, constantly encouraging students to be better. One of the things that was kind of like the highlight of my, this past week, is we have a National Guard person come in and just visit with the students if they want, and he goes, you know what? I go to a lot of schools, there is always something happening at Pelican Rapids schools. He's just like, he's super impressed. He saw Harry for the first time, he's like, dang, you guys are always doing something at this school. And I was like, alright, I like that, okay? And then we have the build wall to kind of work with building a better us, okay? And on that build wall, we have things that have happened throughout the year, all the activities that we've done, so that the students can kind of see where we're at and what's in our future. So that's kind of good stuff. And then, the, kind of like the organizations, there's three major organizations that help me with my, you know, excitement for Harry and seven habits, and that's student council, our SAD group in our Minnesota Honor Society. I rely on those groups a lot to provide me with the, with the energy, okay, to make things happen. And not only that, we have our sports activities. Up in the upper left-hand corner, that's the boys' basketball team, helping a person move. I know the volleyball team, they're, they have a service-driven kind of fundraising. It's really cool stuff. We lock into having things like Sam Tastic Day from outside of the community come in. We are constantly looking for opportunities to show kids that caring for others is a great way to live. One of our, our super fundraising things is, we had the Bigfoot Race where we competed against the elementary, the high school.
Excuse me?
The high school and the elementary raised over $4,000 for a food shell locally. So that kind of stuff. And then, that's Twins Day, Twin Day, student council this past week was Sweet Art Week. Oh, our lunch program, unbelievable, okay? They're part of the culture too. Every one of us is part of our culture. For Thanksgiving, they went around and put nice coverings over our tables, they put little lights, they put leaves, trying to make our students feel special and create that cool, great culture. So that students, you know, come in and say, hey, I kind of like coming to school. Not gonna say it, but, alright, next slide. So, it's hard, like I said, to understand culture, and to be the best school in the nation is, like I said, a big hairy audacious vision. Kind of today, as I was kind of going through the day, I was thinking, you know, building culture is a lot like gardening, you know? You put a ton of work into it, and you're hopefully going to eventually get the fruits from it, the vegetables from it, but weeds are gonna pop up, okay? And you're gonna have to take care of it. Things are gonna go wrong, you know, stuff is gonna happen. You're gonna have outside influences come in and try to mess with your culture, and you gotta shoo them away, and you gotta get right back on the track. And some people might even come in and try to destroy your culture, alright? Bandles coming in. But you just gotta keep at it. You gotta be that resilient type of a person that Harry's kind of pushing us to be. So, in a nutshell, that's what we're trying to do with the culture. It's going okay? What do you think, girls? Yeah? You like coming to school, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah? So, any questions about stuff I do? In, in this, I again, want to thank you because dean of students usually is associated with being the heavy punishment kind of person. These girls know I'm just a grizzly bear when it comes to punishing, but I love this stuff. I love motivation, I love the culture building stuff. And for these three to allow me and Mr. Steves to allow me to do this stuff makes my job really, really fun. Questions?
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
It's weird having you look at me on the screen. Uh, thanks. I, I just want to say a thank you, because I mean, this is, there's so many great things happening in Pelican Rapids. And I'm gonna pose a question to the group, and, and just saying and looking around the room, and looking at how we in this, in this space of this room, are we representing all and each of our students? And is there anything we can do about that in this space?
Is that a question to me or to the whole group?
It is a question to the whole group.
Oh, good.
It's kind of a reflexive question, Mr. Brugman, because I think you have, I mean, this is a list of fantastic things happening, and I just wanted, as I, as you were presenting, I was thinking, and let's look across the room and ask ourselves, like, how can we ensure that we're representing all of our students in this space too?
Which is a good question, because one of the things that I'm a big believer is there's, there are kids out there that it's, it's really, I can think of one, one, I think she's eighth grader, and she's the most quiet person I, I know. And to, to try to get her to come out of her shell and stuff like that, there are people that can hide in a big population, but one of the things I make sure I do is to at least touch base with her once a week and call her by name and kind of call her out and try to, try to make her, I don't know if it'd be, try to joke around with her a little bit, but I think that's something that we gotta constantly do, is constantly reach out to all of our students and try to make that impact, try to make those inroads.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Brugman.
Well, thank you for the recognition of school counselor week, and I'm really excited to share with you what that means for me and how I support students in this school. So that's just what I want to talk about tonight. So my role is to really support all students in the high school in three main areas. That's their academics, their social emotional needs, and then their post-secondary planning. So those are the three main areas I work with students, and then I also want to talk a little bit about how my role is different than that of our Lutheran Social Services therapist that we have in the building too. So, as a school counselor, I am a certified licensed educator who wants to just improve student success for all students by addressing those three needs. And I think that's what's really great about my role, is that I do get to work with all students, and I think especially in this building, I get to see them in seventh grade and then I get to see them all the way until graduation, and we have a lot of growth and a lot of improvement that happens in that time span. They're lucky that they get to have their teachers twice, maybe like in eighth grade and then eleventh grade, or seventh and ninth, but I get them all the way through. So that's what I really enjoy about my role. So here are like, some ways I support the academic needs of students. I create the schedules for every single one of the students for seven through 12, and I tailor, tailor it to their needs and requests, so if they are in musics, if they need interventions, if they need supports, anything like that. For my high school students, I do credit inventories, track all of their requirements to make sure that they are on track for graduation. I refer students who need it to resources within school, whether that's the Area Learning Center, Credit Recovery, or it might be Social Education Services. I do senior meetings, that's something I did this fall with all my seniors, and we reviewed their credits, their schedules, semester two schedules, how did they request their high school transcripts, and then just providing basic help. If they want to go to college, do they know how to fill out an application? Have they filled out their FAFSA yet? If they want to go into the military, have they met with a recruiter, or do they need any help with that? If they think they want to go into the world of work, can I help them update a resume or make some contacts in the community? So it's really fun to make those individual connections with students and just let them know I'm there to help them with whatever they need. And it's fun to hear about what they think about in the fall, and then come spring and graduation, what they actually decide. I also identify students who are at risk and refer them to resources within school or outside of school to help them graduate, which also includes credit recovery for students who may be behind on credits. I register students for their classes for the upcoming year. That is something I just completed last week. I met with all the seventh through eleventh graders and told them what classes are available for them for the upcoming school year, helped them figure out their requests. I was supposed to meet with the sixth grade today, but that didn't happen, so I'll do that next week and help them register. And I also provide information about the post-secondary enrollment option that is available to students if they qualify based on their GPA, and then the concurrent enrollment options, which include how students can get college credit in our building without ever leaving, and I, without ever leaving the building, which is also a really nice opportunity because especially in a school our size, there are a lot of opportunities for students to get college credit. And I'll be doing a separate information session on that during conferences on Monday, and all that information went to families of students who qualify that meet the GPA requirements. So that's a little nutshell of how I support student academic achievement. And then for post-secondary planning, there's a couple different opportunities that I help proctor or provide. I proctor the pre-SAT in the fall for juniors. This, later this spring, I'll help proctor and set up ACT for juniors. This fall, I also provided an opportunity for juniors or seniors who are interested in going into the military to take the ASVAB test. I maintain the scholarship list for seniors and help with applications, and then help with the senior scholarship night, which we know a lot of it, a lot about, because I've been pushing a lot of them to fulfill scholarships. I help arrange career expo field days, or field trip days. This fall, I took juniors to M State, and then they also got to go to Kennedy Secondary School to meet with a bunch of college military work reps. And then we took the sophomores to the Fargo Dome this fall. We also did a career panel here at the high school where we had local community members come in and share what they did after high school, and we had a nice variety of straight-to-work, military, two-year, four-year professional degrees, just to give students a better idea of what's available. I assist students with college applications, especially during free college application week. I send transcripts and then I help with the FAFSA. So a lot of this gets heavy into the junior and senior year, and I would say a lot of this is a result after I have my senior meetings too, that students start to then come with me, or come to me with their prom books and say, I have a question about this, or can you help me with this? So that's really where we kind of get into it. And then the third area that I really help students is in their social emotional support. Thank you. So as a school counselor, I recognize any mental health warning signs that come from students, and this could be a variety of things. This could come from teacher referrals, it could come from peer referrals, it could come from truancy, just a lot of different ways. I can provide short-term counseling for crisis situations or students that might need referrals for a clinical counseling that I cannot provide in school just because of my caseload and because of my role, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to provide long-term therapy. Help in high-stress situations, crisis interventions. I'm a 504 case manager for students who don't qualify for an individual education plan through special education. I do truancy intervention. I serve on the child protection team for Otter Tail County. For students who are in a short-term placement through any type of mental health setting, I help coordinate their academics and make sure they get what they need while they are in placement. I do suicide prevention training and information for all 10th grade students through their PE and health classes. For the eighth graders this year, I have done a presentation on just their choices and outcomes. I advocate for student needs within the school. I help educate teachers on the mental health concerns of their students or any trends that we're seeing. And then I try to recognize and address barriers to accessing mental health services. So those are the three main areas that I work with students, and then within each one of those areas, kind of my roles and duties of how I try to help students. So now I want to talk a little bit about how my role is different of that of the therapists that we have through Lutheran Social Services. So I have a master's degree in counseling, but mine is specific towards school counseling. So it's specifically geared towards working with all students in a school in those three main areas that I shared with you. Our LSS staff have master's degree in counseling, but it can be in a variety of areas. It could be marriage and family, it could be in social work, or it could be in clinical counseling. Like I mentioned, I work with all students and I provide lessons and visit classrooms. Our LSS staff work with students that are specific to their caseload. And each one is different based on if they're full-time, part-time, what have you, but most of the time that caseload is no more than 30 students. And I'm employed by the district, so I don't bill for insurance or deal with any of that for LSS. They have to have clients that they can bill or work through insurance. The nice thing with their agency of Lutheran Social Services is that they're able to make referrals for skills that are needed beyond what the school can provide, but the LSS agency can provide, such as in-home therapy, or if a student or family needs a skills worker, they have access to all those other resources. And then for me, for checking in with students on their mental health needs, it's more of just that. Check-ins, brief, if I know they're meeting with a counselor, I would reinforce any of the coping strategies that they've shared that they're working on and how we can implement that in school so that their school day can go better versus the therapist with LSS will do a clinical diagnosis, weekly meetings with that student, and they will have an in-depth treatment plan for that student and what their needs are. So, for me, I provide comprehensive students beyond mental health, but oftentimes, mental health ties in to those three areas because it can affect all areas of life, while a therapist will provide mental health support for those that have a clinical need. And I truly appreciate the work that our LSS staff do with students, for students that have a clinical need, and they do a really nice job of collaborating within the school, with myself, teachers, just other staff, and they also provide really great information and educational resources too. So even though our roles are different, I think we both have the same common goal of just like working with students and want to support them, but I totally appreciate the work that they do.
Questions anyway? Okay.
Happy School Board Recognition Month.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, multi-use building.
Mine will not be as impressive as his last. At all. So the multi-use building, we're at the football field track area. We're moving forward. Now we're at the crossroads of needing some approval from you guys from the board. So we have contacted the service of BHH Partners at Perron, Minnesota. I've worked with them before in the past, like with some fire hall stuff. They're well-reowned for architectural engineering. So they will do the design. Even though we have a concept, the builder has to have plans to build off. And we have to have, you know, something to hold the builders accountable. So they will come out with the design specs, building materials, engineering as far as the snow load on a building, the electrical, plumbing, mechanical, groundwork, all that stuff is what they're encompassing in their in-house work. Their cost is $31,600 for them. So we will need to get you guys' approval for that tonight so we can move forward. Our timeline is, we're in the February, so we need to get this engineering firm hired. They'll design it. One of the first things they'll do is kick out a preliminary drawing for us. I know I've come to you guys a couple of times with, oh, anything to hand you, and it's a little hard to envision. I have it in my head. Now they're going to put it on paper and then we can get you guys a drawing and get one of them. But, and the thing is, is once it goes out on paper, you know, that's set in stone on how that building's going to look. We want to make sure that we have it, have it right. So we'll be doing that. We want to get it out to bid in March and then open bids towards the end of March, negotiate with the bidders. This will be in several bid packages. It's not just one, come in and give us a bid and build it. We're going to be, we're doing this so we can direct negotiate. One for cost timeline, and then we can keep it as local as we can to, to give our tradespeople an opportunity to build this building for us. In May, we will finalize the building project. And then June 1st, we host section track here, like we did last year. So that's a big, big day. And then the 5th is when we would start the project. June 5th. And June through mid-August, we'd be building it and we would have it ready by the time fall sports start is the ultimate goal. Questions on any of that?
So you'll need approval from me to approve the $31,600?
Yeah, approve the contract with BHH Partners for $31,600.
Questions for Trevor?
Do you want to get Trevor to recommend? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So if you guys have been through Fergus lately and that beautiful building they have on the corner, they are the ones that designed and engineered that building. So they do some good quality work. We've met with them, myself, Mr. Corp, Mr. Martinez, met with two of the partners over there. And they answered all our questions. We know where we stand with them, what they expect out of us, and what they're going to expect out of us. And I'll be working directly with them once we get them in contract for, from everything from the ground up.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, elementary AD report.
You know what, do they have a, you know, like, do I have a? Uh, enrollment, we're at 427, same as we were in December. Thank you to all the board members for everything that you do. This is National School Board Recognition Month, so thank you for everything that you do for us and for our students. Uh, we have three hires. These are because of, one, they're taking a different position outside the school, and two, because of new students that need parent services. Celeste Dahl, Lori Erickson, and Haley Peasley. Our special leadership team has been working on math for the last year and a half. And we narrowed down and we, after visiting schools, talking with other teachers, have picked out Bridges. Bridges has a new series coming out, not this fall, but the following fall. So our teachers thought, we don't want to buy last edition, second edition for one year, then have them change stuff and not support it. Uh, but Bridges has two parts to their math curriculum. One is a number corner that you do outside of math class. And that third edition is coming out this summer. So we will give that third edition this year. And then we'll give the third edition of the regular math series the following year. So teachers will have one year to implement the math corner and get familiar with that before the new curriculum comes following year. February 20th, Monday, we have conferences from 12 to 6:00. And on February 23rd, we have Title I night. They are going to go sliding again like they did last year. Because last year, we had almost 80 students and families there, so it was a big hit. So we're hoping for good weather on the 23rd. Activities report, hire Mr. Terry Howgroot as assistant track coach. Well, I thank Amanda Erickson for the years she coached softball. We have band concert coming up on the 23rd, choir concert on the 28th. And this Friday, the team wrestling starts. They're doing team wrestling a little bit different this year. In the past, the first round was like yesterday, and then the top four teams would advance to a site on Friday. And this year, they're having all the teams go to that site on Friday. So everyone will get to watch everyone else wrestle. Talked to a wrestler today, he's pretty excited because then he can watch everyone that will be at section and see all the matches. So it should be a good, exciting event for them. We wrestle at 4:30 against Porter West, and this year, the event is at West Central Area. The following Saturday, the 25th, is an individual portion of wrestling, and that is at Ladina Deer Creek High School. March 2nd, girls' basketball playoff begins. The first two rounds will be at high seed, just like last year. And then after that, the top four teams move into Detroit Lakes. And the boys will be March night, the same thing, the top two seeds at high seed, and then move into Detroit Lakes for the final two rounds. Uh, the big thing is we, the Heart Lakes Conference received two letters, one from Park Rapids and one from Staples, looking at to join our conference, not for this coming year, but the following year. The conference that they are in right now is basically disbanding, and so they're looking for a home to go to. Detroit Lakes, who is also a part of that, had shown some interest, but it sounds like they are now looking at the CLC down in the St. Cloud area, which would also involve Fergus, Alec, Wilmer, those schools. They would give us nine schools in our Little Lake Conference, ED's meeting. We talked, ideally, go be get the 10. 10 is a good number because then we could have a large section, H1L, and a small section. And then we'd be actively trying to recruit one more school to join that. Seems like we're at a time that if you're not growing, people may leave and then I'll send you down to six or five schools. And for many events, it makes it hard to have like a conference tournament when you don't have many people participating. Any questions about that?
Do you think Detroit Lakes is completely off the table in terms of interest?
They, uh, they did not submit a letter. We had a meeting, they were there, Fergus was there, Staples, Park Rapids. We invited like Lake Park Otten, and they were there. And then their interest has kind of shifted to the CLC. From what we understand, they did not submit a letter at this time.
Doesn't it go by size at all? Because like when you say DL, like, yeah, potential of them joining our conference, I don't see them as being comparable to our school.
And that's where we would go a big and a small section. So like the smallest five would have their own part of the conference, the largest one would have a part of their conference. And you might have some crossover games with the other, you know, like, we're small with the larger ones, vice versa, but it wouldn't be like for the conference championship. So. And there's a lot of decisions that if it's, if it's accepted, they'll have to be decided by updating our bylaws for the H1L. So a lot of work they have there if they're accepted. Sylvia, last century, what were your thoughts? Would it be good to have more runners there?
Yeah. It was more exciting when there were more runners.
LA Track, Boil Hall, basketball? Any other questions?
Any questions?
Again, thank you guys for everything that you do and have a good evening.
Thank you, Derek. Ms. Janaszewski, high school.
I do have numbers to fill in for you. When I did this, numbers weren't quite ready yet. So grade seven is actually 64, grade eight 62, grade nine 64. So we had a couple enrollments in grade nine. Grade 10 is 69, grade 11 is 78, and grade 12 is 781. So our enrollment did go up three kids from January to February to grant a total of 408. January 16th, we had a staff professional development day. We started with Derek Francis with our diversity and cultural and musical training. Then we spent some time doing department meetings to figure out what we're going to offer the courses in the next school year. We also talked about curriculum planning and some curriculum cycle meetings for those departments that are in that phase of those cycles. I want to thank you for your support for our staff and students. I really, really appreciate your positivity. It truly makes our job easier and more meaningful to have people like you behind us. February 6th through 10th was National School Counselor Week. As we saw in our presentation, we truly have a great one with Mrs. Lage. I can't say enough about how fantastic she has had across the hall from me. Same for Mr. Brugman. They are just two great people to truly have awesome supports to have with me. For school year registration, Mrs. Lage has taken the bull by the horns with this. And as she mentioned, students have registered. So we are now looking at a few new course offerings, which I think will be really exciting. We're going to meet in the next week here to really lay out what kids are looking for and figure out how that's going to drive our schedule. But some new offerings we are going to have, will possibly include EMT certification with Ski, if you know who Ski is. He is from Ringdell. This would be offered to seniors basically because you need to be 18 to take the certification, but we think it might pair really well with those that want to take the CNA course and then next semester, take EMT with Ski, who's just a really, really great person to learn from. Intro to public speaking, which would be taught by Mr. Shaper. That would be offered for college credit. Cosmetology I and II, nutrition and wellness would come from our FAIA department, a leadership class, and then Unified PE is back, and that will be with Mrs. Faison. Senior privileges will begin on March 21st, which is the first day of quarter four. As always, students are going to have to have obligations and qualifiers met by Thursday of that previous week to be included in the next week's list. We'll send a letter home to parents to explain this to them, and then also have a couple of signup forms for them if they're looking to get out of study hall or open hour for lunch. Do you have the documents? So this will be part of the letter that comes home to them. But at the very bottom there, it has the requests from the seniors. Some of these have been pretty standard throughout the years. But the first one, with a one-time prior written permission of their parents or guardian and a senior above in all their quarter four classes, students may leave the building during any scheduled study hall that they have. They do need to sign in or the office to do that. They requested that only seniors be dismissed at the first lunch bell for quarter four. No other students will enter the commons until after that. With a one-time prior written notice of their parents, they may have open lunch from that senior high lunch hour, 11:59 to 12:31. They'll leave through EMT's inner door or our office door. From 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM, we will reserve the front row of this parking lot for seniors, and we'll have some signs posted for that. Seniors will be allowed to leave from grad band rehearsal beginning May 16th. Their concert begins May 15th. So that would be the first that they have eligibility to leave from that class. Seniors of the 85% are better, and the average in a class for quarter three and quarter four will be exempt from that final test for that class and the last four days of school before graduation. Then they also requested an all-senior barbecue, which will be hosted by our kitchen staff on the 18th, which will be that last day before the last day, the last really lunch that they would have as a class. Questions on those?
I just want to say those course offerings, I'm pretty excited about.
Yeah.
The EMT course, I took it as a community ed course when I was in high school here. So it is doable as a, as a high school school.
He came in and did, um, he led the CPR certification for our CNA students, and that's what kind of got that conversation started. And I do hope that we have students that are interested in it, even if it's just a couple.
Jay?
Yeah.
Where is the cosmetology class being offered through?
It will actually be offered through Ashley Holt, who is our study hall teacher, but she is a certified certification in cosmetology, which would make her eligible to teach that class. So it'll be offered here in school through her.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Build learning, build trust, build success, just some highlights from this month. January workshop with Derek Francis, our diversity training. SAD collected new winter items for students in need. Student development with Derek Francis. Special education opens up shop. I don't know if some of you saw this on our social media, but the old concession stand outside of Legends will be run during lunch hours for students to purchase snacks or healthy drinks. Ms. Calzwood is in charge of buying the supplies. And then Ms. Thompson and our parents and her special ed students will run the store and use that as kind of their work-based learning experience. January was paraprofessional week, so I want to thank Mr. Redorn, Ms. Howgroot, Ms. Linis, Ms. Hart, Ms. Nedsted, Ms. Trosbeck, Mr. Strom, and Ms. Erickson. They are warriors for our students and I appreciate all that they do. Last week was sweetheart week. As Mr. Brugman mentioned, we had dress-up days, coronation, junior-senior games, and a senior high dance. And there are over 150 students at our dance, which I thought was a really great turnout. And then our CNA students took their certification exams. There's two of them, a written and then a skills exam. Upcoming on Friday, no school. Monday, we have parent-teacher conferences. End of quarter three is coming up in March here, and then March 20th, we'll have a teacher workshop. Any questions?
Anybody have questions? All right, thank you. Now we have our student reps.
I was just going to touch a little bit more on sweetheart week and the dress-up days. So Monday was construction that goes along with the middle wall. Tuesday was night in versus night out. Wednesday was twin day. Thursday was gray on gray. And Friday was relationship status. So you wore red if you're taken, pink if you're crushing, white if you're single, and black if it's complicated.
As Ms. Jay mentioned, close out sweetheart week, we had, student council hosted a very well-attended snowball dance. As Ms. Jay mentioned, close out sweetheart week, we had student council hosted a very well-attended snowball dance this past Friday. And then the school store is now open for business during junior and senior high lunch. It's being collaboratively run by our special ed department, which is creating great opportunities for everyone involved.
Any questions? Thank you. Move on to find-outs. Mr. Martinez?
It's been a while since we've been in here. All right, Treasurers' Report for the month end of January thirty-first. Overall, it was a pretty busy week for us or a pretty busy month. For you guys who recall, I talked about January is a very busy month in the, in the sense that we pay a lot of our outstanding debt. So there's a lot of reconciliation that comes with that. We work with the county to make sure that we get all of our dollars and the auditors to make sure that we adjust our books to actual value. So you're going to see that in the accounts payable column, and I'll walk through it. But overall, again, pretty busy month, and we're still in pretty good standings in terms of cash flow. So I'll start with investments up on top. We started with seven point three million dollars in our investment account. We received one million dollars in federal and state aid, of which I pulled two point seven million dollars to cover all of our expenditures. And part of that is those bond payments. At the end of the month, we had five point five million dollars in it in our investment accounts. Beginning cash, you see the total cash there of a hundred and fourteen thousand. You can see how it breaks down per fund. Total receipts into our banking account was two point nine, two point nine. Out of that, two point nine, two point seven were from our investment accounts. So you kind of see the correlation there. Accounts payable was two point five million dollars, and you see that the one point eight is again our debt payment. In the second page, once we move on, you'll see how we adjust our books in terms of the journal entries. Payroll equated to three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And then we had a small adjustment of fifty-five hundred dollars from a credit card statement that we had to pay. At the end of the day, we had a cash on hand of sixty-six thousand dollars. So again, pretty busy month for January. Big things that we got coming up in the finance world, budget, budget season. So we're starting now those conversations with all departments, with all of our admin team to make sure that we count for every penny. This is the month where we really get into it. This is where people may find me because they knock on my door and I don't hear because I have three screens with about twenty spreadsheets going at once. But it's one job, one job. Overall, projections for budget for the next fiscal year is looking very favorable. So more to share on that when the time comes. But again, excited to start projecting for fiscal year twenty-four. We'll move on to page number two. This is again the journal entries that we did to make sure that our books balance at the end of the month and to adjust things to actual value. So the first two journal entries are practically the big ones. You see how we recognize that big bond payment. And then we move on into the second journal entry, which then pretty much adjusts our books to actual value. So when we, so when we issue our financial segments, the right, the right value of our debt and our assets match. So the rest are just miscellaneous adjustment entries from us according to each run or splitting up costs for different programs. Then the rest of the report really is all the payables that runs, that ran through the month of January. So like I say every meeting, if you have any question on any payables, let me know. I'd have to provide additional support. But that's really the Treasurers' Report. Again, busy month, good month, still very fiscally strong, which is where we want to be. But if you guys have any questions, otherwise, that's all I got for you.
Any questions for Rudy? Any questions? Doesn't appear so, thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Mr. Carr?
Okay, enrollment for K-12 enrollment, we are at eight hundred and thirty-five students. In October, we're at eight hundred and thirty-three. So since October, we're up two students, which is great news. One item I just want to touch on before, I don't want to forget, but on the agenda tonight, you're going to, in the consent items, we have a number of people that have donated money. And there's a lot of people that donated to the scholarship fund in memory of Erling Kelting. And I just want to take this time to give our sympathy to the Kelting family. Erling Kelting was a long-term teacher and coach here at Pelican Rapids School District, and he will be missed. Great, great person. Next items, just a reminder, snow days, days four and eight. The first two, three, days one through three were built-in snow days. Today was e-learning days, that was day four. So you can have five e-learning days. So hopefully, we don't need any more e-learning days the rest of the year. So Safe Routes to School Grant, we're working with the city of Pelican Rapids and the Central Initiative staff on the Safe Routes to School Grant. Right now, we are in the planning stages of writing the grant. Hopefully, we'll get money approved to help with routes, different routes, if it's sidewalks, if it's bike paths, things sidewalks, bike paths, things like that, to the elementary school or to the high school. Policies tonight for approval, there's a number of policies that are being recommended by the policy committee. Most of them are first and second ratings. And the reason why they're first and second ratings is because there's not a lot of changes. There's just pretty much updates or spelled-out references or statutes, things like that, on the ones that are first and second rating. So that would be policy two oh one, two oh two, two oh three point five, two oh four, two oh six, two oh seven, two oh eight, two oh nine, two ten, two eleven, and two twelve. So those policies are pretty much just updates in those areas. Policy two oh five, that is the first rating. And the reason why it's first reading, there is changes in verbiage there. So in regards to the notice of special means for those who have requested notice, meetings during a pandemic, closed meeting rules, coaches' opportunities to respond, and spelled out abbreviated references and added references. So there's a little bit more language that has been added or changed in policy two oh five. Just want to remind you that all the policy changes, updates are all from MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, recommended. Okay? Again, our policy committee went through them last meeting, went through them all, and this is their recommendation to you. Some other items for, on the school board agenda, a couple personnel items, just a reminder that we hired a full-time high school custodian, and then he resigned. So that's why Taylor Poach is on there to be hired. So we have a resignation and a hire there. Mr. Nelson talked about the paraprofessionals at the elementary. We had one person resign, and then we had a couple additional students that needed services. So that's why we are hiring the paraprofessionals at the elementary building. He talked about coaching, and we had an opening there in track. He's recommending Mr. Howgroot to be, to be hired. I think that takes care of personnel. One item under, business item, is approve the two thousand twenty-two pay equity report. That is a report that we do every three years. So that's a every-three-year approval. Mrs. Janoszewski talked about the senior privileges. And then Mr. Steve's talked about the BHH Partners contract, and that needs to be approved tonight for the cost. I believe he said thirty-one thousand, six hundred dollars would be the cost for that contract. The rest are policies under the business items. This Friday, just a reminder, no school, no school this Friday. And then on Monday, there's parent-teacher conferences at the elementary school. Parent-teacher conferences are from twelve to six, and then high school, one to seven PM. That gives the opportunity for staff to attend conferences at both buildings and for parents if they have some time that they're trying to squeeze in to be able to hit them up for lunch, time if they're working in town here. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Questions, okay. Let's move on to consent items. I've got a lot of reading here, and I've got my glasses, so. Item A, approve board meeting minutes, January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting. B, financial claims, January bills. C, Treasurers' Report. D, accept donations. And there are, there are several. So student accounts, eighty dollars Laura Klemic. Viking Boutique, eighty dollars Laura Klemic. High School Scholarship Fund, five hundred dollars. Lake Region Electric Trust Board for Operation Roundup. High School Scholarship Fund, memory of Dwayne Johnson, twenty dollars. Glenn and Colleen Morkey. High School Scholarship Fund, in memory of Maxine Ballard, twenty dollars Lisa and Jade Peznik. And for the High School Scholarship Fund, in memory of Erling Kelting, we have several here. Twenty dollars John and Bonnie McGregor. Fifty dollars Stephen and Patricia Halverson. Twenty dollars Glenn and Colleen Morkey. Two hundred and fifty dollars Rodney and Peggy Supla. Twenty-five dollars Vaughn and Pam Bruin. Fifty dollars David and Cynthia Meldahl. Twenty-five dollars Paul and Judy Tabit. Fifty dollars Stephen and Becky Sortson. Twenty dollars Karen Jungleward. Twenty-five dollars Kurt and Lori Buck. Twenty-five dollars Lauren and Lauren and Colleen Seifert. One hundred, one hundred dollars, the Durbin family. Fifty dollars Michael and Janice Curry. Twenty-five dollars Van and Ruth Holmbrun. Fifty dollars Wayne Gibson. Twenty dollars Karen Holman. Thirty dollars George Gordon. Two hundred dollars Greg and Peggy Beans. Twenty-five dollars Darrell and Colette Howgroot. One hundred dollars Timothy and Marcia Sieglee. Twenty dollars Doreen and Patricia Rudy. Twenty dollars Ronald and Carol Walker. Fifty dollars Central Hills Real Estate Incorporated General Account. Three hundred and fifty dollars Kelting Family. We have PRHS Girls Basketball, in memory of Dwayne Johnson. Ten dollars Darrell and Colette Howgroot. High School Athletics, in memory of Maxine Ballard. Two hundred dollars South Town Seastore. High School Softball Account, Activity Account, in memory of Kathy Steiner. Twenty dollars Karen Jungleward. Viking Boutique, in memory of Dwayne Johnson. Ten dollars Van and Ruth Holmbrun. Student Accounts, two hundred dollars Bunko Group. Student Accounts, one hundred dollars Anonymous. Student Accounts, four hundred and fifty dollars North Emmanuel Lutheran Church. Student Accounts, three hundred dollars Faith Keepers. Student Accounts, three hundred and fifty dollars Pelican Rapids Pool Hall Incorporated. Student Accounts, one thousand dollars Mark and Judy Gresham. Fishing Team, two hundred and eighty dollars Ancient Free and Accepted Masons. Fishing Team, two hundred and eighty dollars Minnesota Masons Masonic Cherries. Viking Pre-K, one hundred and fifty dollars Shada Seed and Egg Services LLC. To me, personnel, approve the resignation of Steve Varstis as full-time high school custodian. Approve the resignation of Amanda Erikson as assistant softball coach. Approve the hire of Taylor Poach as full-time high school custodian. Approve the hire of Celeste Stoll as elementary paraprofessional. Approve the hire of Lori Erikson as elementary special education paraprofessional. Approve the hire of Haley Peasley as part-time pre-K special education paraprofessional. And approve the hire of Carrie Howgroot as assistant track coach. Okay. So entertain a motion for the consent items. Motion by Gray. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Brenda. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent item signify by saying aye. And this will be a roll call. So Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Consent items carry. We'll move on to business items. Item A, approve the two thousand twenty-two pay equity report. Mr. Carr mentioned this is required over three years. And then it's attached.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two pay equity report.
Motion by Brenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Molly. A motion by, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Brenda's motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, we got to roll call again. Stacy?
Aye.
I think that was an aye. Okay, thumbs up, okay. Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, approve the senior privileges for two thousand twenty-three. Motion by Gray. Second by Anne. Are there any changes from last year?
Yes. I'm doing, I'm doing the barbecue this year.
Okay.
Last year, I think, had cookies.
Don't you think they should have the event to give them proof? You, last year, a couple of years they've come.
Is it because of the lineup school today that they get the free gifts?
I think so, but maybe the next meeting we could have, tell us how it's going to go. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving senior privileges for two thousand twenty-three, signify by saying aye. It'll be a roll call. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Gray? Privileges carry. Item C, approve the BHH Partners contract for multi-use building. Would you love to approve the costing of that motion or?
So moved to the extent that the motion includes approving the BHH Partners contract for the amount of thirty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yes. Motion by Gray, do we have a second? I'll second that. Motion by Gray, second by myself. Any discussion on the contract? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving that contract, motion by Gray, signify by saying aye. It's going to be a roll call. Stacy?
Aye.
Aye.
Molly? Brenda? Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Carries. Item D, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero one. Motion by Gray.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion on Greg's motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving policy two zero one, signify by saying, it's first second reading. Signify by saying aye, it's going to be a roll call again. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Carries. Item E, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero two.
I make a motion to approve the first and second reading of policy two oh two.
Second.
Motion by Brenda, second by Gray. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Brenda's motion, signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero three point five.
Moving to approve the first and second reading of policy two oh three point five.
Motion by Gray.
Second.
Second by Anne. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Greg's motion, signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Def carries. Item G, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero four.
I make a motion to approve the first and second reading of policy two oh four.
Motion by Brenda. Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Brenda's motion, signify by saying aye. And I'll start with Greg this time.
Aye.
Greg? Anne?
Aye.
Aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Carries. Item H, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero six. Item H, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero six.
So moved.
Motion by Gray.
Second.
Second by Anne. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving policy two zero six signify by saying aye. Roll call again, Greg?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Stacy?
Motion carries, approve the first and second reading of policy, policy two zero seven. I want to go left on, I'll make the motion.
A second.
I made a motion, second by Anne, any discussion on the first and second reading of policy two zero seven? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving policy two zero seven, first and second reading. Signify by saying aye, roll call, Stacy?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Motion carries, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero eight.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Anne. I'll second it. Any discussion on policy two zero eight? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving policy two zero eight signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Item K, approve the first and second reading of policy two zero nine.
I make a motion to approve the first and second reading of policy two oh nine.
Motion by Brenda.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion on policy two zero nine? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Brenda's motion signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye, Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries, four left. Item L, approve the first and second reading of policy two ten.
I make a motion to approve the second, approve the first and second reading of policy two ten.
Motion by Brenda? Have a second?
A second. Go ahead, Molly.
We have a motion by Brenda, second by Molly, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Brenda's motion signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye, Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries, approve the first and second reading of policy two eleven. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first and second reading of policy two eleven.
Yeah, motion by Molly, second by Brenda. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Molly's motion signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item M, approve the first and second reading of policy two twelve.
I make a motion to approve the first and second reading of policy two twelve, second.
Motion by Brenda, second by Anne. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving policy, excuse me, Brenda's motion signify by saying aye. Greg?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Motion carries, approve the first reading of policy two zero five. Motion by Anne. And I'll second. Any discussion on approving the first reading of policy two zero five? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving, approving the first reading of policy two zero five signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Aye, Anne?
Aye.
Greg? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, usual time. It's a Monday now, it's a Monday. Note the Monday. And then April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three is our regular meeting. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion by Molly?
Second.
Second by Brenda. Any discussion on adjourning? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Stacy?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye, Anne? Greg? We're adjourned, thanks, thank you.